Hello everyone, this is Munakshi, your educator and guide Lee and welcome to Crack with Jack channel. So guys, today I am going to teach you some most expected question regarding SBI Clerk means exam. So session is really very special and important. So guys, let's get started. So guys, today's session is really very important. Today we are going to do most expected questions for SBI Clerk means exam. The topics are column based quadratic equation, number series, wrong number series and arithmetic sums. Okay, column based quadratic equations asked in IBPS Clerk means twenty twenty. So this is really very important and we can expect in SBI Clerk means exam, okay? So guys firstly, I am going to. So guys, let's begin the session. First question is based on column based quadratic equation, okay? This is really very important for your SBI Clerk means exam. We can expect this type of question in SBI, okay? So before explaining this question, I want to clear some concepts of product of root and sum of root. A X square plus B X plus C, this is the standard form of any quadratic equation, okay? Suppose, alpha and beta are two roots of this quadratic equation. Then sum of root is alpha plus beta is equal to minus B by A. And the product of root is alpha into beta is equal to C by A, where A, B, C are constant terms, okay? So if we move towards our question, in column one, what is given in first part? X square minus fifteen X plus L is equal to zero, where L is unknown, okay? And also given A and B are roots of the equation such that A minus B is equal to twenty one, okay? So from first part, X square minus fifteen X plus L is equal to zero. We have to calculate the values of L, M and N here and after that we can match with column two, okay? So from first equation, A and B is given the roots of this equation, then we can easily find what? A plus B, product of root is minus B by A. Here, what is A? Coefficient of X square, that is one, and what is B, coefficient of X, that is minus fifteen. So we can write here minus minus plus minus B by A, that is fifteen because upon the one doesn't matter, okay? So A plus B is equal to finally what fifteen? And also given A minus B is equal to what? Twenty one. A plus B is equal to what? Fifteen. We can easily calculate the value of A and B. B we cancel, A plus A two is equal to thirty six. What is A? A is equal to eighteen. So B is equal to what? Fifteen minus eighteen, that is minus three. What is the value of L? Product of root is A into B is equal to C by A. What is C? Constant term is L. What is A? One, that means A into B is equal to L. So we can get finally the value of L, which is L is equal to A into B, eighteen into minus three. L is equal to what? Minus fifty four, okay? So we can say, we can write the value of A, A is equal to what? Eighteen. B is equal to minus three and L is equal to what? Minus fifty four. Now move further, in part two, find the value of M, okay? What is given here? C and D are roots of the equation and also given C minus D is equal to thirty six. Apply the same logic as in part one. Y square minus twenty Y plus M is equal to zero, okay? So C plus D are the roots, so product of root is minus B by A. Here, B is equal to minus twenty and A is equal to one, so C plus D is equal to twenty. And C minus D is already given, what is thirty six, okay? D D cancel, C plus C, two C and six, three to five. C is equal to what? Twenty eight, okay? C's value is twenty eight, so the value of D is twenty twenty eight minus, twenty minus twenty eight, which is minus eight, okay? So I am writing here, C is equal to twenty eight, D is equal to minus eight. And the value of M is product of root, that is C into D is equal to what? M by one. M, M K value kitioge, C D, so M is equal to what? C into D. Eight eight is a sixty four, eight two is a sixteen, sixteen six two two four, that is minus, minus two twenty four, okay? Same logic apply for part three, okay? In part three, E and F are two roots of the equation and E minus F is equal to thirteen, same logic apply here. E plus F, product of root is minus B by A, minus, B is equal to minus forty nine and A is equal to one. That is minus B by A, E plus F forty nine and also given that E minus F is minus thirteen, okay? Minus minus cancel, two is equal to nine three twelve four five six, is equal to what? Is value is thirty one, okay? And the value of F is forty nine minus thirty one, nine minus one eight, four minus three is eighteen, okay? Forty nine minus thirty one, F is equal to eighteen. The value of N is product of roots. E into F is C by A, C is N and A is one to C by A, N by one, that is N is equal to EF. So value of N is E into F, eighteen ones are eighteen, eighteen threes are fifty four and fifty four and fifty five, five five eight is the final value, okay? So now we have to move in column two. From one, first question, match column one, first part, with which of the following column two statement, okay? There are four options are given here. So from first, one third of the similar root, if we are moving from first part, okay? This is our first part. One third of the smaller root, what is smaller root? Minus three, one third minus one. A single digit but not the decimal value, so this is not a decimal value, this is unit digit, that means first only one, one is correct, okay? From two, the square value of the negative root is lesser than eighty. Negative root is minus three, the square value of minus three is equal to nine, which is lesser than eighty, that means option second is also correct, okay? The one and two is correct and if we are, if we are moving to our option, here what is given? Only one, this is another option, okay? Only one and two. So option number what? Four is correct because one and two both are right. And there is no such option in which one, two, three is also given, so final answer is only one and two, okay? You, you have no need to calculate this. Now, moving to the next question. Find the value of L plus M plus two D by five B minus F by three. We have all the values, okay? What is the value of L? Value of L is minus fifty four, plus M plus two D. What is the value of M? Minus two to four. Plus two D, what is the value of D? Minus eight. Eight two is a sixteen, that is minus sixteen, okay? Upon me, five B. What is the value of B? Minus three. Five three is a fifteen. Clear? Now, minus F by three, what is the value of F? Eighteen, eighteen by three, okay? Six four ten, two three four, minus two forty, that means we have to write here two forty. Minus minus plus, fifteen ones are fifteen, fifteen six are ninety, okay? Minus fifty four plus sixteen, minus the three six are eighteen, okay? Ten, minus fifty four plus ten. This is final is minus forty four is your final answer, okay? Similarly for question three, we have to match the column, okay? Which of the following matches is R two, okay? So from, for option one, first, first, first and second already matched. We, we had already calculated in question one, first, second already matched. So we, we have no need to check these two points, okay? Two third, two third, okay? Check two and third part, if one root is either square value or cube value, in two. One value is either square value or cube value, will put in a second, eight, which is cube value of what? Two cube, that means two third is also right. Now move further, check three and one. If you are moving with by option, then it will make your question easy, okay? Z is square minus forty nine, this one is two, three and one, this match this, okay? One third of the smaller root is a single digit, then in three, what is the smaller root? Thirty one and eighteen, eighteen is the smaller root. If we divide eighteen by three, one third, this is six. This is also unit digit, not a decimal value, that means first part is absolutely correct, okay? So our final answer is option number one. Now moving to the wrong number series, okay? First question is given, many experts are asking about what should be the strategy to crack the logic of wrong number series. So guys, first is observation, do smart work, okay? From this series, what are you observing here? Twenty five, one eighty seven, seven nine three, three one eight one, nine five five three. Numbers are increasing rapidly, so we can say here is multiplication concept, okay? First thing is clear and from second point is which number is giving you a definite clue? One nine one one seven and one nine one two nine, they are close to each other, so we can say here into one plus. What should we add here? One two nine minus one hundred and seventeen, that means twelve, okay? Into one plus twelve, one concept is clear, now moving to towards these two numbers, okay? Nine and nineteen, nine two is a eighteen, nine three is a twenty seven, is not working here, nine two is a eighteen. That means we can say into two, two three is a six, two five is a ten, two five is a ten, eleven, two nine is a eighteen and nineteen. What should be add here? Zero six seventeen, that means we have to add here eleven into two plus eleven. So we can find the logic here into one into two, so next one is what? Into three, next one is into four, into five and into six, okay? Eleven twelve, so this is an increasing, decreasing order, twelve, eleven, plus ten, plus nine, plus eight and plus seven. If we calculate this, twenty five into six is one fifty, add seven, that is one fifty seven, not one eighty seven, that means which is wrong? One eighty seven, option number D is correct, okay? You can check all these points also. Second one is observe here, what is given? Twelve thirty three seventy five, one fifty nine, three twenty seven, seven zero three, three two is a six. Seventy five two is a one fifty, twelve two is a twenty four, so we can observe here easily. Twelve two is a twenty four, twenty four plus nine, thirty three, seventy five two is a one fifty, one fifty plus nine. This much, this, this one is also clear, okay? Thirty three into two, two three is a six, sixty six plus nine, that means all values are following what? Into two plus nine, into two plus nine, into two plus nine. So two sevens are fourteen or nine four thirteen, that means maybe this is good or right or wrong, so we can check here, okay? Two, okay, this one is, this one is correct, okay? Two nines are eighteen, two fives are ten, eleven, two ones are two or three. Add nine, not sutra, nine eight twenty seven, that means this one is also correct. Okay, again, two sevens are into three twenty seven into this, two sevens are fourteen, two twos are four five, two threes are six nine. No, nine four thirteen, six 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 three, which, and this is seven zero three, that means which is wrong? Seven zero three, option number B is correct. Now moving to the this question, what are you observing here? Seven twenty four, one seventy five, six ninety six, numbers are increasing rapidly. So we can say here multiplication concept is applying, okay? Seven twenty four, twenty five, one seventy five, six nine six, okay? If we see seventeen and sixty nine, seventeen fours are sixty eight, that means we can say here into fours, okay? Six and forty nine, six eights are forty eight, six sevens are forty two, six eights are forty eight. Eight nines are seventy two, eight sixes are forty eight, eight seven fifteen five, this much exceed this value, okay? So we cannot take here into eight, we can take here into seven, okay? From here, twenty four fives are one twenty, twenty four sevens are seven fours are twenty eight, seven twos are fourteen. Sixteen, one sixty, twenty four, sevens are one sixty eight. And for one seventy five, we have to add here what? Five to seven, okay? To into seven plus seven here, into seven, seven sixes are forty two. Seven nines are sixty three, sixty seven, seven sixes are forty two, six, six two eight, four eight seven two. We have to add here what? Four eight seven two plus seven, seven eight nine, that means four eight seven nine is correct, this one is wrong. We have to check here also, into seven plus seven, there is four fives are twenty, four sevens are twenty eight thirty, four ones are four three seven. We have to minus here, minus four, okay? Here, seven fours, if we, we, if we consider this one is working in alternate position. So here is also into four minus four, seven fours are twenty eight minus four, this is twenty four, that means what logic is applying here? Into seven plus seven, into four minus four, into seven plus seven, okay? So wrong one is four nine one five, option number D is correct. Now moving to the next question. Two fourteen ninety one, so what are you observing here? Two fourteen, two sevens are forty, okay? Sevens are six are fourteen, sevens are no, six ones are six, six nines are fifty four, that means here, there is into six, okay? So six and seven, what is the middle value of six and seven? Six point five, okay? We have to multiply here with what? Six point five. So we can say if we are multiplying two and divided by two. Two fives are ten, two sixes are twelve, thirteen by two into fourteen, two sevens are thirteen, sevens are ninety one, this one is correct, okay? Into six, this is also correct, into five point five in decreasing order. Five four six into what? Five point five, that is eleven by two. Two twos are four, two sevens are fourteen, two threes are six, eleven threes are thirty three, eleven seventies are seventy seven zero, eleven twos are twenty two, three zero three three, this one is also correct. Now moving to here, into five, okay? Five threes are fifteen, this, here, unit digit is seven, that means this one is wrong, option number C is correct. So guys, in this question, what are you observing here? Twenty one fifty three, one sixty, two ninety two. We cannot apply here multiplication rule, we cannot apply here multiplication rule, we cannot apply here multiplication rule. So we can go with what difference? Three minus one, two, five minus two, three, ten minus three, seven, one zero seven, two. Nine minus six, three, one thirty two, four minus two, twelve minus nine, three, two thirty two. This is six minus four, two seven two five, two fifty two and last one is thirteen minus six, seven, four four seven. Again, we have to calculate the difference between these numbers. Seven minus two, what? Five, ten minus three, seven, twelve minus seven, five, twelve minus ten, two. So there is my, divide by three, next one is gap of hundred. Here is twenty five fours are into four, so next one is divide by five. This one is two minus two zero, five minus three twenty, divide by five, that is twenty, that means this values also correct. So last one is wrong, one two two three, we don't need to calculate further, option number C is correct. Now, we are moving to the arithmetic sums. X and Y entered into a partnership business with the capital of rupees X and X plus ten thousand. So X investment is small X and Y's investment is X plus ten thousand, clear? After two year, J joined them, so J's investment after two year is X plus eighteen thousand, clear? At the end of the two year, Y left, so why did investment for only two years? And at the end of third year, X left, that means X did investment only for three year. And J invested for two year more, so we can say here that J joined after two year of X. So one year, year of X and J invested two year more, that means total time period for J is three years, okay? Into three, from here, we can easily calculate the ratio of their investment, okay? So this is three X is two, two X plus twenty thousand is two. Three X plus eighteen threes are fifty four thousand, clear? This is their what? Investment ratio. In partnership, you already know that investment into months ratio is directly proportional to what? Their profit, okay? So we can say here, what is given that if X and Y got profit in the ratio of five is to six. So we can easily compare here their investment, that is X is to Y, three X upon two X plus twenty thousand is equal to what? Directly proportion to profit, so profit ratio ke equal karenge, five by six, okay? Here, we can easily calculate this, ten thousand and three, three threes are nine X is equal to what? Five X plus fifty thousand. Okay, nine minus four, that is four X is equal to fifty thousand. X is equal to what? Four ones are four twos are eight, four fives are one two five double zero, this is the value of X. Find the sum of the capital invested by all the three, then total investment is X, X plus ten thousand and X plus eighteen thousand. So, XXX, three X plus ten thousand plus eighteen thousand is twenty eight thousand. This is the total investment made by all these three persons, okay? So X value is what? One two five double zero, three into one two five double zero, three fives are fifteen, three twos are six, seven, three ones are three. Three seven five double zero and add here twenty eight thousand. Now what is the final value is here? Zero, zero five, eight seven fifteen, three two five and six six five five double zero is your final answer. Option number D is correct. Now moving to the next question is, the average weight of three girls, P Q R is ninety six KG. So we can write here, P Q R average weight is ninety six. If we can say total weight is ninety six into three, three sixes are eighteen, three nines are twenty seven, two eighty eight. Or we can say that average is ninety six. I am giving you two, two ways to solve this question and the average now become is ninety two when S joins the group, okay? If one person more S join the group, the average become what? Ninety two. Ninety two of what? Four percent, the total average is four twos are eight, four nines are thirty six, okay? So we can easily calculate S average, S total weight what? We can minus equation two, minus one, okay? Then S weight is three sixty eight minus two eighty eight, final is eighty, that means S weight is eighty KG. Another method to solve this question is, first three persons average is ninety six. When S join, these three persons, the average become ninety two, that means there is a loss of what? Four KG. For every person, four percent what? P Q R S. Minus four, their loss, minus four here, minus four here, minus four here. Original average is ninety six, so when S included, then there is total loss of four in final average ninety six. So four, 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 four is a minus sixteen loss in ninety six, that means ninety six minus sixteen is equal to S total weight, that is eighty. So this is your shortcut, you can apply this, you can also apply this, okay? If another girl T, whose weight is six KG more than S weight, so T's weight is eighty plus S weight eighty six, okay? Replaces P, then the average weight of Q R S T, total weight of Q R S T, these four people's average weight is eighty nine. Then total weight is four into eighty nine, four nines are thirty six, four eights are thirty two, thirty two and three, that is three fifty six is the total weight, okay? As we, we have already known the weight of S and T, so we can put here. Q plus R is equal to what? Three fifty six minus S weight, minus S weight and eighty six, that is eight eight sixteen. Finally, minus one sixty six, six six zero, fifteen minus six is nine, one ninety is total weight of Q plus R. What they are, they are asking, then find what will be the weight of P? So weight of P, we can put any of these equation. Q plus R, we have already known the value of Q plus R, so we can put here, Q plus R is equal to what? One ninety. So P's weight is two eighty eight minus one ninety, final weight is eight, eighteen minus nine, ninety eight KG is P's weight. Option number D is correct. Now next question. The age of three persons X, Y, Z is in ratio what? X, Y, Z is six is to eight is to five. The average age of X and X brother is fourteen point five, that means into two karenge, total age a jayegi, forty point five into two, that is eighty one. Whereas the average age of Y and his brother, Y plus Y's brother is forty seven, that is two sevens are fourteen, two fours are eight, ninety four, okay? The age of J brother is five by eleven of sum of X brother plus Y's brother. Then the ratio of X age to J's brother is six is to five, then find the sum of ages of all the three person. We have to find the sum of the ages of all these three person, okay? Eight, six, fourteen, fourteen, five plus five, nineteen units value, we have to calculate here, okay? So we can do here smart work because if you are approaching this type of question, then go by option. Nineteen, we can see here nineteen multiple, one twenty five is not nineteen multiple. One thirty, one thirty three is, yes, nineteen multiple, that nineteen sevens are is what? One thirty three. So we can easily give here what? X, Y, Z age. This is six is to eight is to five, okay? So nineteen sevens are, that means we have to multiply every unit with into seven, okay? Six sevens are forty two X age, eight sevens are fifty six Y's age and seven fives are thirty five Z's age, okay? Now, we can easily find this X brother age, what is XP is equal to eighty one minus X, that is forty two. Eleven minus two, nine thirty nine, Y's brother is ninety four minus fifty six Y's age. Fourteen minus six, eight and eight minus five is three. And J's brother raises five by eleven, XB plus YB, that means thirty nine plus thirty eight. Eight nine seventeen, three three seven, that is one, five by eleven into seventy seven, eleven seven to seventy seven, seven fives are thirty five. If X age and J's brother ages six is to five, that our option is correct, okay? So X age is what? X age is forty two and J's brother age is what? Thirty five. So we can cut here seven sixes are forty two, seven fives are thirty five, that is correct, satisfied our option. That means the final answer is one thirty three, you can go here by option, this is good method for you. Now moving to the next question, which is really amazing. Amit borrowed eighty four thousand from a bank at fourteen two by seven percent per annum compounded annually, okay? So principal is given here eighty four thousand and the rate is also given here fourteen two by seven percent. The fractional value of this percent is one by seven, okay? Per annum compound interest and at the end of the first year, second year and third year. He paid nineteen thousand, eighteen thousand and twenty four thousand respectively. So we can say here, for first year, compound interest and simple interest both are same, okay? So for first year, the interest is principal into rate eighty four thousand into one by seven. The total interest for first year is twelve thousand, okay? So total amount is principal plus interest is equal to what? Eighty four plus twelve, that is ninety six thousand, okay? And at the end of the first year, he paid here nineteen thousand, so principal for second year is what? Ninety six thousand minus what? Nineteen thousand, okay? Because nineteen thousand, he paid at the end of one year, so this is what? Sixteen minus nine, seventy seven thousand. This is the principle of what for second year? So for second year again, interest is seventy seven thousand into rate one by seven, this is eleven thousand. This is interest for second year and the amount for second year is what? Seventy seven thousand plus eleven thousand, that is eighty eight thousand. At the end of the second year, he paid eighteen thousand here, that means principal for third year is what? Eighty eight thousand minus eighteen thousand, which is seventy thousand, so this is the principal for third year, okay? So for third year, interest is principal seventy thousand into what? One by seven, that is ten thousand. This is the interest for third year and the amount of third year is seventy thousand, which the principal plus interest, seventy plus ten, that is eighty thousand, okay? Now, at the end of the second year, he paid, at the end of the third year, he paid twenty four thousand here. So principal for fourth year is what? Eighty thousand minus twenty four thousand, that is principal is fifty six thousand for what? Fourth year. And the interest for fourth year is fifty six thousand into one by seven, that is seven eighths of fifty six, this is eight thousand, okay? What is asking here? If he wanted to clear his debt at the end of fourth year, okay? After, at the end of the fourth year, he wanted to clear his all debt, that means he have to pay total amount of what? Principal plus interest for fourth year, principal for fourth year is fifty six thousand, interest for fourth year is eight thousand. That is he have to pay total sixty four thousand at the end of the fourth year to pay all his debt, that is answer is C, okay? In this question, two person X and Y can do a piece of work in eighty four days and. Eighty four days and seventy two days, okay, respectively, another person J can do the same work in seventeen. Three by thirteen more days as X and Y take together to complete the work, suppose X and Y take together to complete the work in few P days. Okay, so this uh one will be seventeen, three by thirteen plus P, after solving this, Z is equal to. Two to four upon thirteen plus P, okay, from these two information. We can easily calculate total work, suppose eighty four into seventy two, in this case, efficiency of X is seventy two. And efficiency of Y is eighty four, okay, from now, we can easily calculate the work completed by X plus Y together alone. Which is total work eighty four into seventy two upon my efficiency of X and Y to complete the total work, okay. Four to six and eight seven fifteen, so total amount is twelve sixes are seventy two, twelve ones are twelve threes are thirty six, that is. Six fours are twenty four, six eights are forty eight, five zero four upon my thirteen, that means the value of P is five zero four upon my thirteen. So, we can put here, five zero four upon my thirteen, okay, now calculate this, four four eight. Two five to seven upon my thirteen, thirteen fives are sixty five and remaining is seven seventy eight, seven thirteen sixes are seventy eight. So, J can complete the total work in fifty six days, now here, X Y Z. Eighty four days, seventy two days and fifty six days, okay, now what would be the total work here? So, here uh we we already calculated five zero four and J's effici- uh J's total work. Uh days is fifty six, which is also multiple of what, five zero four, because fifty six nines are five zero four. So, we can assume here five zero four is total ansum or total work in this uh problem, okay. Eighty four uh five zero four, so efficiency of X is five zero four upon my eighty four, uh twelve sevens are. And twelve fours are, twelve twos are, si- seven sixes are, that is X efficiency is six, Y's efficiency is seventy two. Uh five zero four upon my seventy two, twelve sixes are twelve, fours are twelve, twos are six, sevens are forty two, seven. And fifty six nines are five zero four, okay, total efficiency is given and now, what they are asking here? Uh if on the first day, X and Y work together and on the second day, Y and J work together alternatively. Then find how many days the total work will be completed, the first two days X and Y is working and next uh second days, Y and J is working. First day's work is this, second day's work is this, and they are working alternatively. And they are asking that how many days the total work will be completed, so X and Y working with their own efficiency, six plus seven thirteen. First day, they are completing thirteen work and on second day, Y plus Z, nine plus seven, sixteen. They are completed sixteen work, so total work for two days, total works uh were completed in two days is six three nine. One one two twenty nine work is completed, we have to complete this much of work, okay, so how much amount we have to multiply on both side? Uh five zero four, if suppose this is thirty, then seventeen threes are what, five one zero, which is more than five zero four. That means we can easily multiply both sides seventeen here, okay, seventeen twos are thirty four days and here. Seventeen nines are one fifty three, seventy twos are thirty four, okay, one fifty three, five four nine, three and one, four ninety three. Remaining work is five zero four minus four ninety three, that is four and seven four, seven four eleven, so eleven wo- unit work is remaining. Okay, now, X plus Y is working, uh started working, after that, Y plus Z and total even days are completed. That means next number is for what, X plus Y, so X plus Y's combined efficiency is six plus seven thirteen, that means. Thirty four days and plus uh eleven unit work in with efficiency of what, six seven thirteen. So, thirty four, eleven by thirteen is your final answer, option number B is correct, then the breadth of rectangle is eighty percent more than the length of rectangle. So, we can say here, if length is hundred, then breadth is eighty percent more, that is one eighty, so we can easily calculate here. Two fives are ten and two nines are eighteen, the ratio of length and breadth, okay, and the perimeter of rectangle, that is twelve plus B. Is same as the circumference of circle, if suppose R is the radius of circle, then circumference is two pi, okay. And the circle is inscribed the square, that means first we make square here, the side of square is A. And the circle inscribed in square, like that, okay, uh radius of circle is R, so this much is also R. So, we can easily relate here A and R because this length and this length, both are same, A is equal to what diameter of circle or two R, okay. Now, the difference between the area of a square, that is A square and the area of circle, that is pi R square. Is equal to what, five one four point five centimeter square, we can easily relate here, A is equal to two R or R is equal to A by two. Because we have to find out the area of rectangle, so we have to calculate this value and this value, okay, so R is equal to put here, R is equal to A by two. A square minus five twenty two by seven, R square A by two, that means A square by four into what, five one four point five, okay. Seven fours are twenty eight, first uh take common A square here, four sevens are twenty eight, twenty eight minus twenty two upon the seven fours are twenty eight. Is equal to what, five one four point five, okay, so A square into six upon twenty eight is equal to what? Five one four point five, okay, this is your final, uh now, what we have to calculate here? Uh four, okay, so we can take here seven into four, okay, four uh multiply by four here, okay. So, four into four, that is four fives are twenty, four fours are sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, four ones are four and five, four fives are twenty two zero five eight. Okay, and A square is equal to seven into six, now, cut it, six threes are eighteen. Six fours are twenty four, six threes are eighteen, so A square is equal to what, three four three into seven. This is what, seven Q into seven, so seventy power four, A square is equal to seventy power four, that means A is equal to seven square. A is equal to forty nine, from A, we can say, R is equal to A by two, that is forty nine by two. And we can easily put the value of R here and L and P, the ratio between L and B is five is to nine. Suppose this is five X and this is four X, put all these value here, two nine plus five fourteen X, okay. Is equal to what, two into twenty two by seven into forty nine by two, two two cancel, seven sevens are twenty two into seven. And here, two into forty X, seven twos are forty, okay, two eleven times, either se chala giya, then X is equal to what, eleven by two. Now, we have to calculate the area of rectangle, which is five X into nine, next to nine fives are forty five into X square. X value is eleven by two, that is one twenty one by two, one twenty one, two twos are four, by four, because this is X into X, X square. Eleven by two k square, one twenty one by four, now calculate this value, uh forty five and one two one, so we can say here. Eleven into eleven, twenty, one twenty one is eleven into eleven, eleven fives are fifty five, eleven fours are forty four, four ninety five, again eleven by four, okay. So, eleven fives are fifty five, eleven nines are nineteen nine, nine five fourteen, eleven fours are forty four, fifty four, upon the what, four. Four ones are four, fourteen, four threes are twelve, okay, four sixes are twenty four, four ones are four and four twos are eight four fives are. One three six one point two five, final answer, option number A is correct, now next, this one is last question of today. Rahul deposited X plus two thousand in a bank, that will offer simple interest at fifteen percent per annum, after two year. Rahul received the total amount from bank, which is three six four zero, okay, X plus two thousand is total amount and. In simple interest, the rate is fifteen percent and for two years, total rate is fifteen into two thirty percent. Total CI for this amount, and Rahul in the received the total amount from the bank, which is three six four zero. Guys, if hundred percent is principal and given here fifteen percent is uh rate for one year, so rate for two year is fifteen twos are. Thirty percent, so the total amount is one thirty percent, you have to take uh one thirty percent of principal, this is total amount. That means principal into one thirty percent, this is total amount, X plus two thousand is principal, thirty percent is simple interest. And one thirty percent is total amount, okay, now, uh the total amount from the bank, which is three six four zero, that means this value is. Three six four zero, cut this by thirteen, one thirty by hundred, zero zero, thirteen twos are twenty six and thirteen is a one zero four. That is two eight double zero, okay, so we can say here, X plus two thousand is equal to twenty eight double zero. So, X value is eight hundred, okay, then he invested five X in a scheme A, which is offering compound interest twenty percent per annum. What is the total amount earned by Rahul from the scheme A after two year, five X is five into eight hundred, that means. Principal in this case is eight into five, eight fives are forty, four thousand is principal, and the rate is twenty percent per annum. For two years CIA is, effective CIA is to uh for two year, on twenty percent per annum is forty four percent. You have to calculate this value from this because CIA is also successive, X plus Y plus X Y by hundred, the rate is same, that is twenty. So, ten B plus twenty, plus twenty into twenty, that is four hundred by hundred, when you calculate this, the effective CIA is forty four percent. So, directly we can use here what, four thousand uh CI for two years is. Principal into effective CIA is forty four percent, that is four fours are sixteen, four fours are sixteen, one seven six zero. So, what uh they are asking here, total amount, total amount is principal plus interest, so principal is four thousand and the interest is one seven six zero. So, final amount is zero six seven four one five, so the final answer is five seven six zero, option number A is correct. So guys, this is all about today, I hope you all are really enjoyed the session and this is really very important question for your upcoming S B I clerk means exam. Okay, I hope you all are enjoyed the session and let me know in comment section, if you like the session, then hit the like button also and comment. Below, okay, and one more thing, I am not so much fluent in English language, uh first time I am making lecture in pure English language. Only for South Indian people, okay, so guys, bye bye, take care and study hard, all the best for your means exam, Tata.